Testing, one, two, three.
I hear you, Dick.
I can hear you as well.
I'm here.
Hi, Sierra.
So I couldn't hear, I don't think, or I think the mayor may have been trying to talk a little bit earlier when he first started, but unfortunately I wasn't able to hear it. I don't know if you're still here, Matt, if you could maybe recap what you said. I apologize. I don't know if it was just on my end that I couldn't hear you if everyone else couldn't hear as well.
I didn't hear anything else, Sierra. It was all dead.
I didn't either.
I didn't either.
I did not either.
No, I don't, I'll be fine. Can you hear, everybody hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hey.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, Mayor, council members, tonight we have come together and discussed how we can help our local food providers as well as our small business community. We are currently going through some very tough times and it appears it will take us several months to get our community back on its feet. So in order for us to help our local food providers and small businesses, I would like to open up this discussion with these ideas. The first one would be, I would suggest that we make a donation to the Boone County Economic Development Corporation to be placed into a micro loan program to help support Lebanon's small businesses. I have spoken with Molly and Molly's online here, so if there's anything Molly can add, I'd appreciate it. About, I spoke to her about such a donation that we would like to make. I did ask her if we would, we would want our donation to only go to small businesses in Lebanon. I asked also that at the end of the year, if funds are left in the program from the city, that the remaining funds be returned to us. She also, she offered, and I support that we have one of our members of our council to sit on their loan committee with them. I'm going to make a request that we donate, now this is all up for discussion, so I don't want anybody to think this is it or whatever. I want everybody to discuss it, let's come to some sort of consensus of some kind. But I'm going to start the conversation off by us making a request to donate to their micro loan program, run the food and beverage fund fifty thousand dollars for them. The second thought is also to provide to the following food providers in our community, the caring center, the Shalom House, the Boys and Girls Club, and Love Inc. A donation of ten thousand dollars each to help carry them through the next four months. The reason I say four months is that that'll help get them through the summer and to August. I suggest that these funds only be used for the purchase of food to provide to our community only. Hopefully by the end of summer, we might be back to normal living. So that would total about forty thousand dollars from our food and beverage fund to the nonprofits, food providers. Nothing's in stone, this is, I just wanted to put this out there for discussion, because I want to hear what a lot of you have, what you think, and I hope we all come to some sort of consensus. And if you want to tackle the, the small business loan help first, that's fine, because Molly's online.
Hey, Dick, this is Rob Shine. I think we had a little bit of technical difficulty as everybody did. So can you go ahead and call the meeting to order and go through it till the mayor gets back on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'd like to call the Lebanon City Council meeting to order here on Monday, April the 27th. Do we need to, should we have a roll call?
Yes.
Anya?
Okay, I've, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Caleb Edwards.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat.
Present.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to, Rob, should I go through what I just did again, or should we just wait? Go ahead and have discussion.
You want to do the pledge of allegiance and then?
That would be nice.
Yep.
Mr. Wheat, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Hey, Brent?
I was muted. Okay, here we go.
Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm sure we can carry on now. This is all up for discussion, everything I read to you, so I think I shared a lot of this on an email to you. So I'd like to get your thoughts and any suggestions, and this is not in stone, so I just, I'm wanting to throw something to the table so we'd have something to discuss, so we can change anything and come up with any other number. I don't care, just long as we come to some consensus of what we think will work best for us.
I do have a question for Molly. Can you hear me okay, Molly?
Yep.
Hey, okay, so I just wanted to clarify, so I was reviewing your guys' website yesterday, and is this money still applicable under, like, on your website, it says you guys have like a five thousand dollar maximum that you can apply for the loans, and then it has different terms, and then it also talks about, like, the ideal candidate would be possibly a business around thirty or less. Is this all still applicable to the money that we would be granting the same program and stuff?
For now, yes. So we did not, ideally, we don't want to make too many changes to the funding. One, because not only is this being funded through the Booney DC, but we also have some private vendors as well. And obviously, you know, as Dick and I discussed, money from this would stay with Lebanon's small businesses, whatever gets returned, or whatever isn't used by the end of the year gets returned, absolutely no problems. But as we start to identify more funders, different strings attached, we're trying to keep kind of everything as even keeled as possible. Pending your discussion tonight, you know, I didn't know what, if anything, the funding may land on. So if you decide on ten thousand dollars versus a hundred thousand dollars, that's a pretty big range for us to say, change a loan amount, for example. So depending on what that level may be, we may decide to increase that overall amount, that five thousand dollars could be to a higher level. We think based upon the feedback and the applications that we've received, we think that that five thousand dollars is pretty low. We would love to get it up higher, it's just, you do with what you can. So, all that to say, things are on the table, but just, right now, it is what it is.
Okay.
Molly, I got a question. What, if you think that is low, what do you, what do you think would be, would ten thousand dollars be enough? Or not enough, or just depends on the small business?
Partially it does depend on the small business. Of the two that have been granted so far, or loans that have been granted, one of them did not receive that top amount, so we do consider that on a case-by-case basis, depending on what their expenses, what their needs may be. I think I have in my mind seventy-five hundred would be a little bit better, could be ten thousand, but again, it depends on where this number could come in at. We debated internally weeks ago when we, when we planned this out, is it better to give out one or two very large loans? Or is it better to spread the love as much as possible and hope that we can help out more small businesses? And so we kind of erred on that side of spreading it out a little bit more.
What's meant the deed or backlog, Molly?
So we have had, Rachel's on here, correct me if I'm wrong, Rachel, six inquiries, six sufficient inquiries, we've had three applicants so far. We have also reached out to well more than a dozen Lebanon businesses, in addition to the others. What we are hearing back, initially, some, some small businesses were waiting to hear back on the federal SBA funding, which as we know, has been not easy to come by. Just in terms of, you know, submit your application at two-thirty in the morning, where the money's gone so quickly. Or that amount may not be large enough to help out during this time.
Thank you.
So Molly, five thousand's not enough, but seventy-five might be, or ten, ten might be?
If it, if it comes down to, we have a max of five thousand dollars under this program to offer as loans, we have five thousand dollars under this program to offer as a loan. We have other funding sources, private sources that are out there, the Indy Chamber being one of those, that you can apply for loans of up to twenty-five thousand dollars. So we can turn it around very quickly. I think the one that, one of the ones we approved last week, we got it in on a Friday and we approved it by Monday. We know there's a couple of weeks turnaround with the Indy Chamber since, because it is a nine-county region and they are getting slammed with applications. So in the case where we've got our five thousand dollar max and somebody needs an additional ten thousand dollars, we're referring them there, but that process takes a little bit longer, so ours can serve as that, that kind of stopgap or bridge to help them in the interim.
Molly, let me ask you this. Could we, could we, could we stipulate our share to do anything from a thousand dollars to a max of no more than ten thousand dollars, our share of giving? Or would that be too much trouble for you to have to deal with?
I would suggest maybe a max. Where you would suggest. Maybe that, you know, if you would like to see up to ten thousand dollars, maybe that might be applicable. Certainly, we will consider, let me phrase it this way, if somebody doesn't need five thousand dollars, or if they don't need ten thousand dollars, they don't need to apply for all of it. It can be a lesser amount, so that's partially why I'm saying maybe if you'd like to see a higher amount, we'd be open to considering that.
I want to throw something in here, Molly. Having owned a business for twenty-eight years, I, I really can't see five thousand dollars doing very much for anyone. If five thousand dollars is going to be the difference between you making it or not, then that's great, but I just don't see how five thousand dollars is going to help very many people.
Which is, which is why I do believe that at best, it is a bridge until some additional funding can be secured. But I agree, if five thousand dollars is going to break a business, then there are probably some other challenges that are out there, right?
Right.
You muted yourself, Mike.
We can't hear you, Mike.
We can't hear you.
I would, I would say, I'd like to hear, Mary?
Yep.
I, you know, I just threw this number out here. I, you know, when you're looking, five thousand dollars, we have ten businesses. I don't, I think I asked you this question the other day. Do we have ten businesses that might, could five thousand dollars help? The other thought of that is, is if we had, had a, I'll just, I'll just throw out, let's just say we had a hundred thousand. There's, there's, and we could offer it up to a max of no more than ten thousand dollars. You got ten people, or you got twenty businesses of five thousand. We helped have many more. I, I don't know, I just.
I would say if.
Or anybody, or what?
If the amount went up to a hundred thousand, then for sure, I would want to increase that individual max loan amount. Instead of doing twenty-five thousand dollar loans, doing the ten, ten thousand dollar loans, or some sort of make sure, I think would make a much larger impact if you went to that larger level.
Well, you'd, you'd have more opportunities for, I'm either one of ten, or somebody only needed seventy-five, you know what I mean?
Correct.
I don't know what, I don't know, I'd like to hear what other council members think and what, how they feel.
I think fifty is a little low. If it, if I was going to throw a number out there, I'd say maybe like seventy-five. But that's just one opinion of me. I don't know if anybody else has an opinion.
I'd have to be with you, Sierra. I think a hundred might be a touch high, but fifty's too low, so somewhere in the middle. But at the same time, we could always reconsider this, too. There's not, hate to say it, but, you know, it's not a maximum of one request, and that's one and done. You know, if, if we keep going into this virus pandemic for significantly longer, that doesn't mean we can't revisit this and reevaluate what kind of need there was, get some real hard data on what was actually used and revisit it. So I'm kind of torn between the two. From what Molly was saying, it sounded like we had quite a bit of people, and I agree, five thousand's probably not enough for a business, and there's some probably major underlying other issues, if that is. So I, a hundred thousand sounds like a lot, but I think it's probably reasonable.
A hundred thousand dollars when it comes to business is not very much money. And if we are going to have an impact on a business, then we should put funding in there that is going to make it work, and then give the EDC the power and authority to provide that money without any limit. Well, I mean, they use their common sense, but if they see a business that is very viable, they need twenty thousand dollars, that's going to save twenty-three jobs, then they should be able to have the flexibility to do that. And not just say, okay, we can only give you ten grand. I think it should be based on viability of the loan really having a major effect on the successfulness of that business.
Hey, Molly, can you give me some examples of what this money's gone towards in the past? Are we talking operating capital, capital improvements, or what are people doing with this money that have gotten it?
In the past, so in the past, we offered just kind of the regular micro loan program. So under the regular micro loan program, we even included startups in those that we would potentially consider for funding. So that has, that is not under discussion for this particular program. But we have considered startups in the past. One example was Sharkco Manufacturing down there on Indianapolis Avenue. They were operating out of their garage. Not only did we help them kind of take care of that facility and get up and going in there, but that micro loan helped them fund a small amount of, at least decrease some of the expenses they had related to the actual manufacturing equipment that they needed. In other places, it has, say for a restaurant, it has purchased, gosh, we've done, we've done ice cream coolers before. You know, we've done tables and chairs, it's been a variety of things, it's always needed to be a tangible expense. Right now, though, we recognize that people's needs are greater than just the capital expenditures. They may need help with inventory, so for example, hair salons. One problem I didn't necessarily foresee with this is that some hair salons have been selling a lot of their product online during this time to just make up a little bit of money, to the point that they're not even sure they have enough in the supply chain to be able to get it, product back on their shelves by the time they reopen, because they don't have enough money to do it. The money's going to pay the rent. Other people have a need to actually help pay for salaries or that rent payment. We have not considered things like utility payments. A lot of the utilities already have a process in place if somebody's having trouble paying that utility bill, and so we've been referring them to that, so the funds have not gone for this. But we've kind of left the door open at this time for, for those small businesses, because we recognize it's a unique time, for sure.
Okay.
Molly, question, how, all the things you just said, how, is there any, how do you know they use that money for that type of thing, I guess?
We request copies of those receipts, so we can see that that's what it's been used for.
Just to make sure nothing is used for personal items?
Correct.
Okay.
So if, if they pay salaries for employees that are laid off, or however they choose to do that, are we going to know that? Are they just going to say it goes to salaries?
What we have requested has been trying to strike a balance with that, because we don't want anybody turning over any social security numbers to us, and us having, I'm not in that business. So what we have requested in that case are some sort of financial record that does not have any personally identifying information on it, that would show that that's what they've used it for. If they're double dipping, then that's a different problem, right?
There's always ways to falsify things, but assuming everybody operates above board.
We hope so. We hope so. The, the thing I, you know, I do want to just convey to all of you, like, the micro loan program, as we have historically had it, it is a risky investment that the Booney DC has made over time in businesses. Most have been successful, either their business has just taken off, or if we didn't want to determine success, as they paid back their loan to us. But it's risky and not all have been as good as we maybe thought they were. And that's during good economic times, so again, I just, I don't, I want to manage expectations here in that we know that these are riskier investments and we do our. So again, I just, I don't, I want to manage expectations here, and that we know that these are riskier investments, and we do our absolute best to review them and make wise decisions, um, based upon, based upon the information we have available, um, on their business and on themselves.
John, Keith, uh, have you guys got any thoughts, uh, opinions?
I'm, I'm fine with what we're doing. I can get along with it no matter what.
Molly, Molly, I was just concerned a little bit on, how many defaults have you had over the years on your loans?
We've had two.
Out of how many?
Twelve.
Big ones, small ones?
We did larger loans under the original program, we did up to fifteen thousand. One was about the full amount, and the other, I, I believe he made payments, and I honestly can't remember how much the total value was that we wrote off.
Uh, council members, what, what are your thoughts then about a, uh, a, well, you're getting more questions from Molly, I guess. What, what are your thoughts on about, uh, about an amount that you're, uh, feel comfortable in donating to the program?
I'd say increase to a hundred thousand dollars, so they can have an impact. Understanding as a, as the people loaning the money, that we know, we only loan money that we know that we're, we, we may lose it. So we'll get most of it back for sure, but, I mean, every loan money, you gotta understand that you only loan money that you can be comfortable without. So having said that, my, my ability is a hundred thousand dollars to the EDC for their loan program.
And to clarify, Mike, when you say back, that means back into the EDC micro, so back to the council, correct?
Eventually, yes. Well, it, it just depends, that's another question, whether it goes back to the council at some point, or it stays in the EDC for a revolving amount.
Well, I, I'll be, let me kind of put it this way a little bit. If we was to give a hundred thousand dollars, and, and I'll just, uh, an example, let's just say fifty thousand, we got fifty thousand at the end of the year. Uh, they give us fifty back. Uh, as a city, we could still, uh, that fifty thousand that would come back, that was loaned out, would come back into their microloan program. And that would still be the city's donation to help city businesses, uh, uh, in the future. I, I don't have a problem with that, I, I don't, I think that's probably a good idea, a good idea in case something would happen. How, how is everybody feeling about something like that?
Say that again, please.
Well, just an example, let's just say we gave a hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, they loaned out fifty for the year. We get down to the end of the year and there's fifty left, and, uh, the corporation returns that fifty to the city. The other fifty is in the microloan program, it comes back in, uh, what, twelve months or, or two years, something like that, Molly?
So anywhere, so the loans we've been giving out are anywhere from twenty-four to sixty months.
Okay, so twenty-four to sixty months, you've got that, you got that other fifty thousand that was loaned out that's still in that program. And instead of having to worry about what's that coming back to the city, uh, leave that as our city donation to the microloan fund that's still to continue to help city businesses in the future, my thought.
Why haven't they said loan the entire hundred thousand? You want them to return fifty thousand eventually?
Then there was a need for it.
Let's hope it all works.
And that's kind of where I was going, is there's been low utilization of this to this point, and the situation is moving so rapidly. Why don't we start with fifty? And then if Molly comes back in two weeks or a month and goes, you know, we, we got this out the door in fifteen minutes, then we can talk about more, and then, you know, maybe much more. Or it may be, we really didn't need, see that need, we didn't really use the money. So until we've got a better handle on what the actual need is on the ground, uh, I'm more inclined to start a measured response, and then see where it goes. And then, you know, like I said, if, if there's a huge need, then let's meet it. But I want to see the need first.
I, I'm kind of like Brent on that same idea. Um, as much as I'd like to go a hundred, I, I like the idea of fifty to start with, and, and if it, if it goes quick, uh, then, uh, Molly or, and our council representative can report back to us and tell us that, hey, we, we're into this thing two or three months, and our fifty grand is gone, and there's still applications on the table. Uh, what do you guys think? Can, can you help again, you know? I, I think, I think I'd like to see that and see if it works. And then, and then leave that option of, uh, uh, of a max of, of ten thousand dollars is the maximum loan you could get for it. What do you think, guys?
I, I tend to agree, Dick and Brent. However, on the flip side, I do not want to run into a situation where Molly, Molly's out of her fifty grand, not fifty grand in three weeks. And then there's a four-week turnaround if she has another fifty grand to work with. And then there's a small business or two that just missed the mark by a week, and now they may not make it a month before we all approve and the checks are written. So I'm just, I guess I'm trying to think of every angle and, and approach what ifs, I guess. But at the same time, I hear what you're saying, Brent and Dick, let's get some measurements, and it's definitely a challenge to balance where that three spot is.
Well, my, my feeling on that is that we, 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 I, I would give them the hundred thousand dollars and let them, the EDC, be the group that regulates on who they give the money to, but they're going to do a good job. We have to have faith in the build, in their ability to loan the money. And then we, we let it, you know, things fly the way they fly. But to try to micromanage their jobs is not our job. They're not going to give money to people that don't deserve it or need it. And we have to have that faith and trust. So we should just allocate the hundred thousand dollars, know that they're going to handle that money just like we would, because they're citizens in this community also.
Mike, I, I respectfully disagree. If I didn't believe Molly and the EDC would handle this properly, I wouldn't offer them one dollar. So I'm just worried about, let's find out what the need is. And then to Caleb's point, it, if there's a big delay upon us, so if we decide this is something important and the need is there, then, you know, there's even special meetings, and there's video meetings. So, uh, I, I just want to see some things happen first, and then we've got a good baseline. And like I said, it might blow us away, we may need to put a lot of money into this program, or we may find out we don't need to put that much in it.
Maybe we could meet in the middle somewhere like around seventy-five for now, and that way there's a little extra money in the pot. If they need to come back, they can ask us more, or, you know, if it's low turnout, then we can ask for the money back at the end of the year. We could kind of try to split it, or just an idea out there.
What was that against, Sierra? I didn't catch it.
Um, I was just trying, I say maybe we could meet in the middle between the fifty and the hundred thousand, we could be at seventy-five. That way, if there is only a need for fifty, we could get the money back at the end of the year if they don't spend it all. Not like a little wiggle room, or, you know, if they need to come back, if seventy-five isn't enough, then, you know, they could come and talk with us again. That way it's a good in-between, yeah.
Well, I just want to make this comment that I'm sure we're going to have someone on the, on the, on the committee with them. It's going to be a council representative. And that council representative will be talking, reporting to us every time we have a meeting. So he could tell us what the need is and how quick it's going. And at that meeting, we can make a decision if we want to support it a little more, uh, to help the need. Is the mayor on, or is he still off?
I think, if this is.
I, I saw, I saw, okay. I, well, I saw one message that popped up, uh, he, uh, he said that, now, this was City of Noblesville. Now, they're a little different than we are. But the City of Noblesville, uh, they made, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand available. And I don't know structure, I don't know the structure of their program, only it's a grant. And they had two hundred applications. Now, that's the City of Noblesville, they're a whole lot bigger than we are, so.
Molly, you said we had six requests already this year, is that correct?
Six requests for this particular program, but it's countywide. I don't know how many of those requests were from Lebanon, though. Rachel knows off the top of her head.
We have one specific request from Lebanon, but we've, to your point earlier, we've reached out to twelve small businesses, or over twelve small businesses in Lebanon to really try to feed this program by spreading the awareness. And that's one thing that we've been actively working on, is how do we best reach the small businesses? Now, with that said, the small businesses right now are inundated with information on loan programs and things like that. So that would be one opportunity, um, that we're really spearheading right now.
Well, council members, what do you think? You want to, uh, I'm hearing fifty, I'm hearing a hundred, and I'm hearing seventy-five. Um, I, I'm like Brent, I could, I could go the fifty, uh, and I could compromise, I could compromise at the seventy-five. Uh, I, I think if we go the fifty, I still think if we go the fifty, uh, our, our council person on there is going to keep us posted on how it's going. Rachel just said there's twelve, and if, uh, let's just say six of them step out to the plate, and they would like ten grand apiece. And, uh, that's a grand right off the bat, and our fifty's gone within a couple of weeks, so.
Dick, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I motion, make a motion that we, uh, donate fifty thousand dollars to the, uh, EDC microloan program.
Yeah, I've got a motion on the floor to donate fifty thousand dollars to the microloan program for EDC. Who's second, uh?
Keith.
Keith, second up.
Okay, Dick, this is Rob Shine. To clarify, what fund is that being appropriated out of?
This, this will be, this will be coming from the food and beverage fund.
Okay, Brent, you want to add that to your motion?
Yes, amend my motion that this, the funds are coming from the food and beverage fund.
Okay, we have a motion, and in a second to approve fifty thousand dollars.
A quick question.
For the EDC microloan program from the food and beverage fund.
What question?
All those are favor, yes, sir, who's got a question?
I have a question. Brent, on your motion, is there a limit to ten thousand, or did you keep it at the will of the EDC or at five thousand?
At this point, I'll take the will of the EDC. Uh, I do trust them to administer the loan, and, um, you know, whatever they feel is the best at this point.
Okay, I, I'm just curious somehow that.
And can I make a point that, that?
Sir?
When we do these votes, I don't know that, uh, doing it by voice vote's going to work, because it just sounds like a big jumble. Should we do an individual voice vote or something?
Roll call.
Yeah, I couldn't think of the name of it, yeah.
I can do that. So, so Mike and Cade, are you saying yea or nay?
Yea.
Keith Campbell?
Yea.
Caleb Edwards?
Yea.
Dick Robertson?
Yea.
John Copeland?
Yes.
Okay, then Brent made the motion, and Keith.
Sierra.
Second, okay, Sierra?
Yea.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council, that's the first issue.
Again, this can be brought up next month, or two months, or whatever, in case there needs to be an increase, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, and, and I would like to be the volunteer, uh, councilperson to sit on their committee to approve the loans.
I'll second that.
We got, we got, we got, we got a motion, motion by Mike, and a second. All those, can we do a roll call, or you want to just do a voice vote?
Just.
Thumbs up.
Everybody say yes, unless somebody has a.
Everybody, everybody say yes for Mike to be on the, on the committee.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Okay, Rachel, it's up to you to get back to me and let me know what I need to do and where I need to be.
I'll do so promptly. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Rachel.
Hey, thank you all, we appreciate it. We will, uh, get to work on this first thing tomorrow morning and, uh, see what we can, see what we can get done. And we just really appreciate your support and partnership on this.
Good luck to you, Molly.
Thanks, thank you so much.
Okay, the, uh, second issue we want to discuss is the, uh, 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 providing some sort of support to our, uh, uh, the, the nonprofits that are providing food in our community, the Carrying Center, Shalom House, Boys and Girls Club and Love, Inc. Uh, my thoughts were, like I say, we're to offer them ten thousand dollars. Uh, that would take them through the next four months. Uh, that would be a total of forty thousand dollars out of the food and beverage fund. And to, uh, then at the end of the four months, then we could look at it again if we still had this problem. I think that'd probably be enough to help them get through the time, uh, and have funding to only be spent on, on food, to provide, or to purchase food to provide for the community. So that's, that's just up for discussion, so.
Well, I'll start out. I, I don't have a problem with it. The only thing I'd like to add is I would like to see a report back, just so there's a little accountability, you know, we don't have to have grocery receipts. But if somebody could come back later and just say, we spent, you know, ninety-nine hundred dollars on, uh, you know, bananas, at least less now.
Okay.
Uh, real quick, I, I met with the, uh, the Carrying Center as well. Uh, they have a wide variety of things when they do. They do food, they do, um, uh, milk and protein, they do, uh, rent assistance, they do utility bills, they do food only, that includes baby food and formula. So they have a wide range of areas that they address with their money that comes into them. So when you say food only, uh, I, I would say, yes, that would be a good start, but sometimes with the times that we're going through rent assistance and things like that, uh, it's very important to them. And so I would, uh, they said that number one on their list was dairy and protein was their greatest need as of today. So I, I would like to give them a little bit of flexibility if possible. I know that the Shalom House, as I met with them also, theirs is strictly food. Uh, the one bad thing that the Shalom House recently went through is they lost their, uh, major fundraiser for this year, which usually brings in anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for their organization, and that's lost for their, this community.
Somebody calling in, I think.
Or grandfather clock. So those would be my comments on the two organizations that I met with. We've, we've worked with them over the, over the past years many times, uh, and I would like to give them flexibility on, if they do get to approve funding.
Well, if they use our ten thousand dollars for food, that would free up some of their other monies for do whatever, whatever else they want to do.
That's a possibility.
Yeah.
But, uh, they've increased quite a bit since this, the last month or two. Uh, they, the Carrying Center was going through about ten tons of food a month, they're up to eleven tons now with an increase in that. The, uh, the Carrying Center, I'm sorry, Shalom House is going up quite a bit also. The numbers that they sent you this last spring, they usually do about two hundred and eighty-four lunches, dinners, and things like that during the spring break. This last year, they went to, uh, eight hundred and fifty-four during the spring break time. So there is a big increase, and hopefully they'll use it, uh, to their best benefit.
Does, ever, how does everybody feel about that? Everybody okay with that, by allowing the Carrying Center to, at least encourage the Carrying Center to use, uh, as much of this money as possible for food, and then if they have, uh, other needs, uh, just keep, just make sure they at least let us know at the end of the four months what all that money went for.
And I would agree with Mike, that, uh, the, the city's contribution could go to the food, and maybe their other donations could, if needed, go to rent. That would be a good suggestion on our part. I'll be more than happy to reach out to them on that, if approved.
Okay. Caleb or Sierra, Sierra, what are your, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a good idea to, you know, help out these organizations and I'm for it. So.
Yeah, I'm for it too. Are we talking about a one time or revisiting request or?
Well, right now we're talking on one time to get through the four months and, and then just, uh, uh, I think we just got to see how things are going. I, I hope we're 75% back to normal by then. And maybe we don't have to help out the rest of the year, but, uh, uh, at least that'll, at least that I think will get them through August.
And the report is for 10 grand, correct?
10 grand, yeah, 10,000.
Would it be dispersed at $2,500 a month, Dick? Or would it be a strict $10,000 donation?
Uh, I think it would probably be easier that we give it to them at a $10,000 donation. And let them know that we will re, uh, that if.
Monthly reports. And get monthly reports?
That would help if we could get a monthly report.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree, Dick. Um, you know, I've volunteered a couple of times at the Caring Center and it's so important to have that stock inventory and not be down to three days left in the month and the shelves are wait, empty waiting on another $2,500 donation. So.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree. The lump sum upfront would be critical to helping them make the transitions each month.
Plus they can get a discount when they buy a certain amount. So if they've got the cash flow, they can buy more.
Sure.
Brent, what's your feelings?
I'm good with it all.
Keith?
I'm, I'm fine with all of it.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we need a motion then if everybody's okay with that.
I'll make a motion to donate $10,000 out of food and beverage to the Caring Center for the next four months with, uh, monthly updates.
Uh, Caring Center, Shalom.
Girls.
Boys and Girls Club and Love Inc.
I will amend as presented, yes.
Second. John Copeland second.
On food and beverage, okay. We have a motion and a second. Uh, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mike Kincaid?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Caleb Edwards?
Yes.
Dick Robertson?
Yes.
John Copeland?
Yes.
Brent Wheat?
Yes.
Sierra Messenger?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that is all that is.
Actually, uh, Dick, uh, we got a comment from Matt saying that there should have been an amendment for 10 grand for each. Was that 10 grand for, I know we just didn't vote, but was that 10 grand for all the organizations for four months or 10 grand each?
10 grand each.
Each.
Okay, so shall we make the last vote null and re-vote?
No, I don't think so.
I wrote it down.
10,000 each, total $40,000.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, is there any, is there anything else on our?
Mike's muted and he's trying to talk.
Sorry about that. I, I do want to mention this because I mentioned it in my email messages that the Boone County Mentoring Program is in, in a crisis mode also. And you, you saw my message. I know the reasons and so forth regarding the importance of that program. And then Dick said tonight was going to be a food only. So our next meeting, I'd like for us to revisit the requests from the Boone County Mentoring to help them cover some additional costs that they have in order to deliver their program, which is helping the kids that are locked in their houses now and they're, they're at risk. And now they're more at risk. So I just want to put that out there that the next meeting, I want to revisit that program.
Hey, Mike, can you find out what the school's helping them with?
Yeah.
I'd like for them to be looking to it too.
Okay.
Uh, also, John, do you want to touch a little bit on the, uh, the, uh?
Youth Council?
Yes.
The, uh, I have been in contact with members of the Youth Council. They want to make a presentation to our board. They have received a matching grant of $2,500 for their project downtown Lebanon for the mural that they've helped design and put together as a group. And they would like to make a presentation at our next meeting or next month sometime, uh, for, uh, for, uh, a grant from food and beverage as well.
Okay. Uh, we'll try to get those on the agenda for our next meeting. Anything else, gentlemen and ladies?
No, sir.
We need to approve the minutes.
We need to approve the minutes of, I forget the date of the meeting. I read them.
March 9th.
March 9th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 9th.
We move to approve. Or also, whatever's convenient.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, I heard Brent. Do we know who seconded it?
Keith.
Keith?
Yeah, whoever, I don't care.
Got it.
It seems funny. That was a long, such a long time ago we met. Okay, uh, any other business?
Do we have to, um, the comment line that Joe was talking about, do we have to address that before we, um, sign off in case anybody has any?
Uh, we might. Joe, are you there? Did we lose, did we lose the mayor completely? He never got back on?
The mayor is on, he just, we can't hear him. He can hear you.
Okay. Brent, do you have anything for the council? Do you need to tell us anything?
No, I do not at this point, um, other than what you've covered.
Okay. Dick, yes, John?
I would suggest that, uh, since we can hear Joe and the public can't, that we at least make it on the record that there was no comments from the public when we dealt with our, uh, motions and acceptance tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I'll mention that in the minutes.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain, entertain another motion to adjourn then.
Dick, we have Kevin Krulik, the city engineer online. I didn't know if he was just listening in or had something that he wanted to say or?
I don't know. I think he's probably listening.
I'm just, just listening in here if you needed any assistance on anything.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
Kevin? Kevin, can you hear me?
I can.
Uh, how's the paving projects going?
Uh, it's, uh, thank you for asking. It's, it's going well. Um, we've probably, we've got a few more days of paving and some, um, more ADA ramps to go. Uh, probably got another day to finish up Indianapolis Avenue. Uh, we were working on Grant Street, uh, today as well. So a lot going on in a lot of areas of the city. Um, we've had a lot of good, uh, um, help and assistance from our consulting inspection crews, making sure that things are, um, are done the way they need to be. Um, just remind everyone that, you know, we are doing ADA ramps and we're resurfacing streets. Once the surface is done, we will, we are not finished. We do come back and are, um, we'll be saw cutting around and all of our, our, our castings and adjusting those and setting those into concrete. So a little bit, a little bit different than what we've done in the past, but we think this will give us a much better product. And it will last a lot longer, you know, having those castings all reset and secured.
Is it those Mr. Manhole covers or concrete collars, Kevin?
It's, it's essentially, yeah, Mr. Manhole is a proprietary system, but, um, it will be similar for now.
Excellent. That's great to hear. Uh, glad to see all the work, great work going on and all the improvements happening and, uh, glad to see Indianapolis Avenue got a little wedging level before they surfaced and it's going to turn out great. Uh, keep up the good work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, I was glad to get 250 down. That was really nice. So yeah, can't wait for them to come back and finish their approaches into the subdivision.
Thanks for the brief, Kevin.
Now entertain another motion to adjourn.
I'll motion we adjourn the meeting.
Got a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, who was that? Keith?
John.
John.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you all for tuning in this evening and we hope to see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
You're welcome. See everybody later.
Everyone.